I call this meeting tonight for the McClintchism City Council, meeting of May 8th, 2018. If you would please rise and we'll do the pledge allegiance to the US and Texas flags.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as all.
Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please bow your heads in the invocation tonight. Lord, we thank you for our town, we thank you for those who come out, those who show up, and those who vote. We want to have a special blessing on new council members coming in and the new mayor. Give them, just as you have given us, wise words to say and open hearts and ears to listen and to be servants, as I know that they are. Lord, just bless our city. Let us come together, neighbor to neighbor, making things better for McClintchism, just as everyone has that vision. Thank you for those who give us that freedom to be here and to have things like elections and debates. Thank you for the two years that you've given me here in this seat with this council. Bless those who are staying on. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay. I apologize that the mayor is not here to read his rules of decorum, as I'm sure most of you are. He is absent, he's on vacation, that was already planned a month ago. I will not go over the rules of decorum. Get out of line or we're shutting you down. That's just, that's it, okay? Before I get to citizens' comments, I do want to address just one thing that is on the agenda that I know kind of got some things flying around and going. So, the canvassing and the swearing-in of newly-elected officials are two different things, alright? So, there is basically a board that tells the city that, yes, you can go ahead and canvas. And I've got multiple laws and, you know, this was given to us by our city attorney saying when this can be held. So, they're not meeting until tomorrow. So, once we receive word that they can say, yes, you can hold your canvas, then we'll put out the 72-hour notice and we will have two of the sitting council members do the canvas. However, the actual swearing-in can be done as soon as Friday morning. So, the three incoming mayor and two council members have the opportunity to come in and be officially sworn in on Friday. I think that is what they're going to do. And then, that'll be the official thing and then they'll have a ceremonial with the families dressed up, you know, pictures on the next council meeting that will be coming up. And they'll take their seats that night, okay? So, I just wanted to get that out there so that way if they're, you know, I know that some may wanted to bring that up in citizens' comments, you certainly can't, but just wanted to make sure everyone understood that point. So, now I'm going to open up to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens who reside inside the city limits of McClintchism to speak to council. Citizens should stand at the podium, state their name and address, and express concerns or questions. State law does not permit the council to deliberate items that are not on the agenda. Concerns may be referred to staff or scheduled for consideration at a future city council meeting. You'll also notice that we're not broadcasting tonight, except for Robert. Thank you, Robert. The audio will be in meetings only and because all that equipment was Mayor Steinhegin's, his personal equipment that he loaned here, so hopefully by the next meeting we'll get something set up. So, but I apologize that, like those who may, you know, say, hey, it wasn't on tonight, that was, that's the reason, wasn't that we didn't want to do it, okay? So, anyone for citizens' comments, please step up.
Yeah, come on, plug this up here. To be a city council person is to be a servant and a custodian of the public trust. Custodian, now, person who has responsibility for something, or who manages a trust or other fiduciary responsibility, a person employed to clean and maintain a building, is a messy and often dangerous job. And everyone has a vocal opinion of what you're doing and how perhaps it could be done better. At best, you start the role with the confidence of the majority of the voters and skepticism of the minority. At worst, you get chosen by the city council to fill an open seat and have to earn any political and social capital from the years you've served. Holding the public trust is holding your job and the art stick that I mentioned were measured. The public has spoken and by a rough factor of 60 percent, 40 percent, we've made clear by our choices of future custodians that we want the fire service that we have trusted for 40 years now. We don't want a council that adds layers to bureaucracy to multiply areas of our lives while preaching about small government. We don't want to pay the bill and blood and money to establish a new fire department from scratch. It is wise to examine the issues of cost and needs in all areas of the city operations, but it could have and should have been undone with a fire services contract in place and we didn't want it. These citizens have begged for this council to do it. Now again, we stand before you and ask you to be true to the public trust you hold. The once-called vote minority has demonstrated in the election that we do not agree with the means and direction this council has serious in up to this point, and that the truth and right deed of voting has shown that we are not minority in meaning. I believe that on average, this council has done a decent job with the city budget and in other matters, much of many might disagree with that opinion. But the coffers of political and social capital, the ledger of public trust, is running over and ready. Please work with us to repair that way. With the citizens who have been labeled the vote minority and with our fire department that have voluntarily lain down their lives for us for 40 years of counting, they are our fire department. Please abandon discrepancy, they know better than us how we should be governed. We're not here to be preached to, and you are not here to propose your vote upon us. You're here to work our role, you're here to listen and then to speak with our votes. You're here to be custodians, not governors. I pray through wisdom upon you and our city in these days, and that going forward, we can all set aside the shackles of ego and the mere illusion of the court, to make a sacrifice of empty pride for the fervorance of trust and honor. For those of you leaving council seats, I understand that you want us to welcome back to the podium. I hope your time behind that desk gives you a new perspective, and I have no doubt you will continue to be active advocates for your values and will hopefully hold the trouble of our present and future custodians. Thank you all, God bless.
Thank you, Robert.
Good evening. Beth Stacey, 279, Park Drive. I first want to say to Elaine, Salem, and Mr. Mayor Steinhegin, who's not here, thank you very much on behalf of us. I know what it's like to sit there, sometimes a painful shock. We want you in, sorry, and I really appreciate your time and your service, and your family and love. It's lovely. I am here to talk tonight about something that may happen in the future, and I apologize, but I'm not going to be able to meet at the public hearing on May 29th, where you are going to talk about code of ordinance section 6.9, construction materials subsection B, changing into a renewed exterior construction of main buildings in non-residential districts, adding the exception being municipal government buildings housing municipal government operations to be constructed of metal or any other upper material. In the section that you're talking about, metal buildings are permitted in light industrial or planned development districts upon review of the planning's own admission and approval by the city council. The main thing on this section that concerns me is that, don't think, the front of a building facing the street must be 100 percent facing it. These ordinances were put into place so we did not become a 276 or a 211, big look. They were put into place so the buildings were attractive, lower maintenance, and not have to worry about rusted out buildings falling down. I am against this change, think I know why you're considering it, and I have the closet factor to be the same, honey, but I don't think it's the right thing for this area. And this also means, like, city hall sits and the kitchen neighbors to have on that I build if you're on the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
I'll make it very quick. I'm too short, 15 minutes, I grow up. Good evening, thank you for your medium opportunity to speak before you. The recent election showed that people wanted a change in our representation by members of the city government. I ask you tonight to consider not voting on any of the public safety or emergency services that you have on the agenda until the newly-elected members can be sworn in and review the information. We all know that public safety is very important in times of the essence. Delaying the votes for decisions a few days gives fresh insight for new members on these items of paramount meeting the needs of all of us in our community. Now's the time to bring unity to our community and in the division. We can still be a community that has differences of opinion. Thank you and God bless our city. Goodbye, my judges.
Thank you.
Really just one point that I'd like to make tonight, and that's, in the process of transition, the hallmark of our democracy, the peaceful transition to the government's, has been something that citizens of this nation have fought and died for, had their lives changed, so it's not something that we should ever take lightly. As I look forward, there is a new mayor, new council members will be announced, and as I look back on the 2016 election and pulled up what the agenda was for that council meeting that followed it, I just, it was interesting to see what was not focused, because at that time, folks in the room, I don't know if we'll remember some of this well, there was a controversial issue that had been discussed by the city council, maybe called the development ratification. Everything had been done to proceed with that development, and the council had been in a perfect position to move forward and approve that, and set this plan in step. The council, though, despite three members remaining, decided to not move that forward due to the contentious nature of the election. It was a wise decision, council ended, new mayor came in, the council, and they reversed the decision the council prior to the may. In fact, at least two of the members, I think, had changed their one and all view on the development of that, of the development, and it wasn't a decade's period. Important is that the decision and whether you agree with it or not, it was a process, process in mind. And I think those people understood that at that time. So, here we are tonight, looking at the agenda, and I see the fire service coming on heels of another contentious election, that painting issue. And like I think some of the previous speakers, I would encourage the council to pause, reflect, think carefully before approving any measures, any expenditures, public funds, any policies. Certainly, you enjoyed Chief Simmons giving an update, he was with Statis. I look forward to the details of that development, that plan, so that we can understand that, understand the plan, and how we need to implement, what the risks are, what the costs are, all four issues, because they have long-term implications and decisions that we may have to operate in fire department, which is us, that will affect our children, will affect our grandchildren. So, that's something that we should be very careful as we move through that decision. The other point I want to add on to that is, meeting yesterday with the leadership of the fire department leadership, and again, speaking for them, in their stead, since I am a resident of the city. They are safe to maintain our service access and contract, nothing's going to change. So, there's no rush. I don't think our service is going to disappear tomorrow, but next day, and every month now, from now on. It's not an issue, so it's not necessarily a pressure that they're going to be taking on. So, in that light, again, reiterate to council, if you have to make the chief statements, if you have to say, I would encourage, I would encourage you not to make those kind of decisions that will have long-term implications given the outcome of the election. Honor the incoming council away, the prior mayor and the prior council, honor Mayor Otis, and that post-council member, so they can then post on it, allow it, see, and again, whether you agree with the decision or not, the same decision is made appropriately using the democratic process.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening. My name's Lance Agee, 15-09, Gator's gone. I'd like to represent the citizens, regardless of how the board is running the outcome, especially in terms of the community, I think that's a lot of, I'd like to echo, what Beth and Mark mentioned, more about the aesthetics of building, the ability to change the state of reflection that, that, which is, which is, which is, which is, which is, which is, and before you do, this is what the citizens have to say about that, and to make a comment or a statement to the council, and to the residents, discussions with citizens, and more of the, um, also, I actually, as it's on, I have mentioned that, I'm, I'm, I would say, one of his, obviously, conclusions on the fire department, I think, would be why I still, um, actually, regarding that, this is, it's both, and it's associated with both, uh, the, of the 1.1, which is all the fire department, the service in the city. So, I just ask that you keep that in mind, that you are servants of the city, volunteer, communicate, worship, dedicate, contribute to families, but you are a representative of the city, so I suggest you're a representative of the people. So, with that, I would like to give a suggestion, also, providing a new environment, changing the complexity of the work for our community in the future, I think we should all start thinking about where we want to go, as considered, that the highways widen, a lot of the homes and businesses have the whole, the whole process. Where we give the city, having a member of the city club, where we open there, I would like to suggest, maybe some people will like to join in, but maybe the state, the local, the private, that maybe some of our A and M's that would be a good location for an aspirant or a stone facility, that would be a good representation of our city, with access to the 5, with access to, honestly, probably the large, well, at the same time, we could be someone that works. But I'd ask everyone in the city to think about that and where we want to do, where we want to go. And I'd also ask to ask you, Jim here, a few months back, mentioned, the wages of the fire team, I don't know if you've listened to the fire department. Your statements were incorrect, and I'm not egregious. I would ask that you may or may not apologize, because I stand in all of the ways, because you mentioned how much you make, sell, either way off, if you're pushing, maybe, should call, but, uh, those who are left, if you're here, the office company's not here, and you bring, I'd ask that you respect the local people, listen to the local people, listen to your new colleagues, that are coming in, listen to the people of the city, and I'd also ask our city staff to begin to get, to do their jobs. Set, and not interfere, and not sit up for assistance, which is, we pay your salaries, and not, setting up a staff. If you're responsible, you stand up and speak, and I see you do that, if you want to do that.
Mr. Agee. Mr. Agee. Mr. Agee. Mr. Agee. Address the council, not staff, sir.
Yeah, I'll answer that. So, I'd like the city staff to begin listening, to stand up, and to be involved, it's not the council's responsibility to drive it. As citizens, their voice, they're supposed to help implement the plans, and they're supposed to give you the information to take you to, to do the job, and to look at it on. However, if you're a council, that you terminate any contract with the incoming fire department, that the city wants to, I also ask that you may return the city attorney, if the city, if they're blocking, uh, the city, that you should, so, thank you, for showing your down.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the citizen comments. Go on to number five, approval of minutes. So, the discussion, action regarding approval of minutes, February 27th, March 13th, and March 27th, of the regular council meetings. Has the fellow council members been able to go through these minutes?
February 13th, I have, I can, I'm sorry, February 27th, I have, I can confer.
Okay. The other two, you're still reviewing?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes for February 27th, 2018, of the regular council meeting?
Yes.
Anybody here second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So, the February 27th meeting minutes have been approved, March 13th and March 27th will be on the next agenda item. Um, street, we got the, the street lighting, we're going to get a status report.
Mr. Butler.
Hang on.
Sorry.
There, um, something, I want to make sure that everyone understands that the staff takes direction from the mayor and the council. They, neither of them are citizens of this community, they serve our community in their capacity. If there's an exception to what their responsibilities are, should be taken up with the council. And today, Lisa got bombarded by our citizens and got dumped on. I'm running this meeting tonight, I didn't get one phone call, one text, one email, nothing. I encourage that if citizens have issues, just as Mr. Agee may have, could be legitimate concerns, maybe stuff that we don't even know about, maybe there are, they are not doing what they're supposed to do in getting information to the mayor and to the council, you know, so the new council, they need to, you know, you need to reach out to them. Please, if there's something on, on agenda, that's, that's unfair to call her and, and dump on her, because she has no, nothing to do with what any of these agenda items are, you know, she does a fantastic job. Again, if there's something that needs to be done, please let the council know, the council will take action. You know, every city employee here is at will, and they know it, okay? So, they've got to, just like, you have your job, you got to go in, you got to perform every day, so do they. And if they're not doing their job, the council is the ones who take that, that responsibility on. So, please, you know, the new mayor of the council, you know, bring it, bring it to them if there's issues with, with the existing, and it will get, get taken care of, you know, so, you know, Mr. Agee, there, there is a, there is a sound anymore, there is a voice, you know, for that, to take care of that, so, but just like this, particularly, the reason I ran it up now is because there was a resident in Sonoma Verde that reached out to me several weeks back about the lighting going from 205 into the entrance and how kind of it's not very well lit. Found out that the tower that is, is there was really the main lighting function. Well, I guess the lights worked too well, because the neighbors on each side were saying, hey, this is coming through our windows, so Ross Phillips decided to take that, that lighting down. There is two poles, structures ready to, that can be, you know, erected, and Encore can, can tap in, into those, that would shine straight down. So, that's where we are now. Dave Butler was instructed to investigate this a little bit more and get with Mr. Phillips. So, Mr. Butler, do you have an update for us?
I do, I did get with Mr. Phillips and talked about what was going on there, and he said that he would move to light the monument that is out there to create more light for the intersection, and that he would then see how that goes, if that's satisfactory, if it's not, he would then consider the addition of streetlights out there that Encore would put up. But prior to that, he wanted to relight the monument out there and see, and see how that goes, so that's, that's where we stand with it now.
Okay.
Don't go ahead, I don't know, I haven't been out there tonight, so I don't know if it's on yet or not, but...
Has anyone seen if the tower, tower lights are back, back on out there, Robert?
They shut off randomly. Maybe it's not so much necessary to get it, if they're not on, if you come by at 1:00 at night, they're not on, or you come by at 2:00 in the morning, and they're not on.
And they're on at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, or?
I haven't seen them on the daylight, but they're, they're not on consistent.
Okay. All right, so you may want to pass
I will.
...that along if, you know, there may be something going on that it's not consistent.
Right.
Well, good, well, that's a good, good first step, and then a follow-up, hopefully, next council meeting or after that, if that's, that's getting all resolved.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next line item is an update from Uh, next line item is, uh, an update from the Clinton Chisel Fire Rescue Department, um, I just want to make sure and clear that everyone understands that when sort of things come up on, on the agenda items, um, it says discussion and action doesn't necessarily mean there is an action. Thing is, if there, uh, if there's not that word "action," then the council, if something needs to be done, can't do anything, if it's just discussion only, okay? I will tell you right now, there will not be any action happening on this, okay, unless there's something that Chief Simmons, you know, comes up and says differently, okay? You know, there's nothing, you know, that, that's going to be happening tonight that we're going to redirect or direct him in any different than what he's already been, been doing, so. Um, I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that transition process will still be in place, uh, unless there's something that we need to act on. We're not going to be doing, doing that, so, but, we did want to get an update from Chief Simmons, since he started, and, uh, progression that he, he has made. Mr. Simmons?
Good evening. All right, uh, just a quick update on a few things, uh, we did finally achieve our FDID number, Texas Commission on Fire Protection, for agency. Still working on policies, a few things that we have accomplished, or have accomplished, is I'm, I'm actually working on the BFI S four volunteer retirement program. Again, uh, a lot of these things that we're, we're continuing to move forward with is to, obviously, hopefully, I can still have communication with MC, uh, VFD, which I've had over the last two weeks, and it's been a great conversation, so, um, some other things that we're working on. I do know that they have a nineteen ninety-five engine that does not pass a pump test, so I've looked at several different options, whether buying something that's a two thousand and nine model or newer, uh, or even purchasing maybe another Skeeter-type truck, the one, like, the new, pretty one that they've got down there. Um, so, all those costs, the, the most expensive thing we're looking at, even if we buy brand-new, uh, vehicle like their, their new brush truck, we're looking at every hundred fifty thousand dollars or less. I'm not bringing any action without a discussion on what we want, but I want to give you an update of some of the vehicles that we're looking at, and the reasons why we're looking at it. As of today, I've spent a total of, uh, two hundred dollars, that's to set up a continuing education, uh, company for us to be able to have for continuing bed and things like that in the future. So as of, as of now, that's about the extent of, of the update. We have reached out and talked to a couple of companies, uh, in regards to looking at different options for fire stations, just similar to this, or other options of possible, but no decision to make.
Okay, uh, and you, you may mention, uh, discussions that you're having with MC VFD-
Yes.
-without divulging, getting, you know, into that, why are you, please explain why you're having discussions.
Well, as I spoke with council in the beginning, guidance was, my first order of business was to hopefully be able to fix and mend the fence between MC VFD and the city. They have, like I stated in the last council meeting, they've done an outstanding job. Chief Jones has done great things over the last year with that department, they are a very professional department. And I know, and I've heard the citizens, they want to keep MC VFD there, the nice thing to do is we can take that B away, and we can become one, so my focus is to come in and hopefully mend that fence, bring us together, and we can become one entity and expand and grow on their forty-plus years of service and experience.
Because you may mention their, um, before you talk about the, the, you know, the, bringing, you know, together, mentioned they've got, you know, a ninety-five, you know, engine that can't pass a, a pump test and, and, you know, possibly go out of service at some point in time.
Correct.
So, some of the things that you're looking at, would, is actually building on to, if they decide to, to, you know, merge, and the city decides to merge, uh, to, as, as one, that this opens up a whole nother door of using the, the, that budget in order to help improve what is already there?
Yes, sir, e- even though the city's approved the two hundred thousand dollars to be able to purchase anything, I mean, I haven't spent any money of that, because, uh, what, over the last nine days, being in office, first three were working on grants, trying to help Lisa, so we can get those, the two help us out, um, if everything works out. But it's been continued communications, trying to see if we can't get something resolved, and become one, and, and looking at options, reaching out to some of these companies, seeing what kind of vehicles we can buy to, to at least get rid of that nineteen ninety-five, um, and put something in service, and they know that they can use, and this could be trustworthy.
Okay, uh, and just so, for, uh, I guess, every- everyone, including, you know, the, the council, um, you know, some of the numbers that we're coming up with, you're saying, "Oh, it's a hundred fifty thousand," could be, you know, the, the, different, different things that, yes, if you're purchasing that all and writing a check, uh, but that's not the way that, that you're planning on going, you're going through, through leasing, municipal leasing?
Municipal lease allows us to, an example, and I'm using rough numbers, so don't owe me to, to a penny, uh, but example of a, a three hundred thousand dollar loan, three hundred fifty thousand dollar loan, um, a city municipal loan or lease would cost us around forty-five to maybe fifty thousand dollars for that one particular amount. The good thing about the municipal leases is that, for some reason, you know, people think, "Oh, now you're tying us into fifteen-year notes," that's not true. Um, what these agencies do, with these companies, that are designed for municipalities, it allows us to get out there and do what we need to do without having to go after increased taxes or anything like that, stay within our budget, um, but it allows, in two years, if the city decides, we're out, city's no longer in existence, or they don't want that equipment anymore, uh, the companies come back, they can take possession of their equipment, no expense to the city, no cost to the city, city's allowed it no more.
So the, the municipal leasing is a mechanism for cities like ours-
Yes.
-that can buy, like, what FATE did when they, you know, started up and, and had some expenses, is that you can do over three, five?
Up to fifteen years.
Right, and generally, most, unless you're doing a brand new, from what I understand, from-
Ten, fifteen used equipment you're getting-
Yeah, used is like-
Not seven.
Right, five, so, so these are all done in a payment-
And that-
-mechanism.
Forty-five to fifty thousand dollars based on if you did it for five years, so, obviously, it would, it would fluctuate a little bit, but those are just some rough numbers.
And then that gives you time, then af- after that, those five, you need, replace that, then you just kind of start-
Correct.
-over, kind of thing, okay, all right. Uh, any council members have any, any questions, or chief?
So you obtained the FDID number?
Yes, ma'am.
And what's the next, uh, documents that's on the docket to, to achieve?
Um, right now, that's, that's, that was the big one, um, obviously, the head of department paperwork, which, uh, it takes, you have up to a year to be able to achieve that certificate certification, uh, which I'm currently working on now, with, uh, the skills and things that they require you to do, and some of the courses they require you to do, uh, but you have up a year, up to a year to actually achieve that certification, so, but, but, other than that documents, that was the big one, was getting that, because, you know, it could be a municipal department, and the merger, we would need that number, we would be, um, now recognized by Texas Commission on Fire Protection, they would be the ones that would scout it, go down and do inspections and all that fun stuff, they would do.
Awesome, and then, uh, has the grant, uh, paperwork been processed?
Yes, ma'am, grant paperwork has been submitted, we submitted, uh, one on Thursday, uh, I don't remember the dates, but one on Thursday, one on Friday, two before that, correct? So they have been submitted, and I'm not sure of the time frame, June, July, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Somewhere around there, we should hear something of some sort, maybe, but they have been, been submitted.
Awesome, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Chief Simmons. All right, uh, item number eight, council meeting, date changed, discussion, action regarding a resolution, change the date of the regular city council meeting scheduled for May twenty-second to May twenty-ninth. So May twenty-second, there's a runoff election, and so they're gonna need to use the chambers, uh, that, also in the next agenda is a public hearing, so even closing this off, there's not enough room, so, um, the, the next available date would be just from that Tuesday to the next Tuesday, to May twenty-ninth. Uh, do I, uh, have a-
Wait, are we, are we moving the date?
Yes.
To, to the twenty-ninth?
Yes, from, from May twenty-second to May twenty-ninth, because the twenty-second, this is not available.
Right, I got that, I just want to make sure that we're moving it to that date, so-
Yep.
Okay.
And so I have a, a resolution here, uh, by the city council, reschedule on the second regular council meeting in May twenty-eighteen to May, from May twenty-second, twenty-eighteen to May twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen, and provide an effective date. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the next regular city council meeting will be May twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen, at six-thirty. Okay, so go on to May, the May fifth, uh, twenty-eighteen general election canvas, and this is the, uh, discussion action item regarding the resolution canvassing, the, the returns. Uh, again, we talked about, um, how, um, we have, uh, received legal counsel saying that it would not be in our best interest, as far as legality goes, to do it tonight. There is no rush, um, so might as well do it right, last thing I'm gonna do, the last thing leaving out, is doing something that the, that's against our attorney's advisement. So, that goes to, um, the number ten of alternate, alternate date of May fifth general election, uh, canvas. Um, I am going to ask that we have two of the continuing, uh, council members do that canvas. Uh, just so you know, what the canvas means is that, uh, two voting members of the council will come in, will basically certify the, the votes, sign, approve, and it's a done deal. It, it's not, not, not a, a big thing, they're not ta- tabbing through, they're not looking at votes, names, and all that. It is, here's the election, um, council ha- has sent over to us, here it is, so we need seventy-two hours, uh, notice, in order to do that, so if we put it in for tomorrow, the first time that, uh, could be canvassed is, would be on Saturday, so, Mr. Hare and Mr. and Mrs. Baucham, um, from Saturday, and it cannot be any later than Tuesday. How about they say something? So what-
I-
-date is good for, for you?
It's gonna have to be Tuesday for me.
Mr. Hare?
I'm leaving out of town tomorrow, I will not be back until, uh, next week, so it would have to be Tuesday for me as well.
Okay, uh, what time?
Does it, does it matter, like, can you do during the day?
I can do during the day.
Okay, let's see that, if we can do, you want to do like, two?
Follow me.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, do I hear a motion to have the canvassing for the May fifth, twenty-eighteen general election results, um, for, um, Tuesday, May, was that fifteenth?
Yeah, May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, uh, at two P.M. Any, so move, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So Lisa, if you will make sure to have a seventy-two hour notice, uh, done prior to, to that time, thank you. Okay, council member, uh, reports. Mr. Hare, do you have anything on roads and transportation?
I was, um, on business travel during that, and I had, uh, Mr. Butler attend, and, uh, and we discussed it, it, there was nothing new out of the, the recent one.
Okay. All right, um, Mr. Woodham?
Are you sure you don't want to finish the code of ordinance book?
No, okay, uh, Ms. Baucham, turn the, the floor over to you for any, uh, communications, community engagement, emergency services, uh, committee updates.
Uh, this is for the ESAC committee, as a committee, we've had made the decision to forego the potential consultant route. Uh, since we've hired Jim Simmons on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, we'll be more prudent and productive, since he will be heading up this department to work with him in developing the fundamental plan that will ultimately be executed by him. Uh, Jim has already shown extensive initiative in providing adequate and cost-efficient equipment with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Wayne Orchard and Council Member Scott Turnbull, and we are going to use his expertise, and since he has started, he has started departments, uh, from the ground up before, and he's familiar with volunteer programs. And we have spent zero dollars.
Okay, so just to, so I understand, so you had a budget line item for a consultant for five thousand dollars, and that will be going away? You're not, you're not gonna be using an outside consultant?
It was used, it was, the purpose of the money was for to consultancy and, and any type of supplies, so, we have not spent, uh, any money to pay consultancies or anything.
Okay, and, and the plan, from just kind of what I've heard, is since you have inside resource, you're not gonna spend, you're not looking at using a consult, an outside consultant?
Correct.
Good, very good. Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen of Clinton Chisel, I, uh, again, thank you, um, for, you know, support, uh, over the last, uh, two years, uh, and during this election, um, you know, there, there was, you know, uh, things said, done, whatever, um, what, what is, done is done, we move on. Just like they did last year, they did the year before, they did the year before, yeah, every, every election, everyone has, has sides. Uh, what I hope is that, uh, tho- those, you know, um, o- one thing is, guys, that, um, it shows passion for your community, that's great. You know, I, I'd say the same thing on Lance, you know, having the, the turnout that, that we had, uh, was awesome, you know, um, just getting that many people involved, you know, uh, so, you know, somebody was complaining about Rockwall, and, and it was like, "Don't y'all care what's happening in, you know, a much larger city?" You know, and percentage-wise, you know, we're killing, uh, so, um, you know, that, that's great, a- and so, uh, and yes, I, I will still be involved in any, any way, uh, that I can help, you know, um, anything to the, to the new council members, you know, can, can reach out to me and say, "Hey, what happened with this deal?" You know, something, I am available, you know, so, um, but I appreciate, uh, your involvement, uh, appreciate your support, love service, uh, being a service, uh, to the city. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting tonight, God bless.